Okay, thank you. We are back in session. And with this, I would like to ask for a motion to authorize counsel to proceed as we discussed in the just concluded closed session for attorney plaintiff.
So move.
Second.
Chairman, Mr. Edward Gennings?
Yes.
Vice Chairman, Mr. Donna Drews?
Yes.
Ms. Robyn Batu?
Yes.
Mr. Scott McDade?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennis Concanon?
Yes.
Mrs. Michelle Cavacchieri?
Yes.
And Mrs. James Miller?
Yes.
Very good. Mr. Schmanowicz and everybody, thank you very much for your patience. Go to you in the public hearing. This being the public hearing for Flemington Junction Associates Three LLC preliminary and final site plan for the two flex warehouses. Chairman, members of the board, Ron Schmanowicz from the front of Hudson, Schmanowicz and Plocker, on behalf of the applicant Flemington Junction Associates, Roman numeral three. As the chair stated, we are seeking preliminary final site plan approval for the two flex space buildings total approximately 70,000 square feet. Included among the relief are two bulk variances you'll hear about. I believe there's one design waiver. Just by way of management of the meeting and preview, we planned a call. Several witnesses, we have David Gardner, principal with the applicant, Mike Ford, our site engineer, Michael Testa is our licensed architect, and Douglas Polyniak is our traffic engineer. And last but not least, we have our planner with regard to the variance, Mr. John Leo Caballo. Unless there's any other housekeeping or concerns, my first witness would be Mr. David Gardner.
Let's just have a reminder for everybody, get it to the microphone, please, and clearly.
And can I just, it might be just easier, we have, everybody who's going to testify come up, I swear you're all in, then you just state your name and spell it on the record. Okay, so we'll do it once. Whoever's going to testify, come on up.
Okay.
We like efficiency here. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, and please state your name and spelling for the record.
David Gardner. G A R D N E R.
Michael Ford. F O R D. Michael Testa. T E S T A.
Douglas Polyniak. P O L Y N I A K.
John Leon Caballo. L E O N C A V as in Victor. A L L O.
And again, and the board professionals should probably be sworn in too. Let's do that.
We usually remain sworn.
You remain sworn from what?
From the reward.
One and done.
Okay, I'm sorry, so we have one that needs to, okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yeah, state your name, I'm sorry.
Unless his T E R A U L T.
Thank you.
Mr. Gardner, you can sit next to Mr. Schmanowicz.
I'm all right. What you rather me say?
Just make sure you speak loud and clearly, please.
You didn't even tell me I was testifying.
All right, let's see.
I don't think this will be difficult or very long. The only thing I wanted you to do is just state your position with the applicant, which I think forward is very well known to you and you to them. But I did want you to speak to the prior jobs that were built, how those turned out, and how this proposed development tonight compares to or relates to those prior jobs.
Sure, so I'm David Gardner. I'm the president and CEO of Larkin Associates. We're based in Branchburg, New Jersey. And then, you know, in this area in Hillsborough, we built a bunch of industrial flex type space before. And I've been in front of you guys a couple times. So the first project that we did is next to the baseball fields. And we call it Flemington Junction One. It was the four flex industrial buildings. And I don't know if you guys have been in it, the project came out great. It's fall, we're 100% leased and 100% occupied. Now, if interest rates would just come down, maybe we can get some money back out of it. But it's rented and it's doing great. And, you know, we, whatever, we're really proud of it. Around the corner, we call Flemington Junction Two on Miniakin Road. And I can pronounce Miniakin now like that. Because when we first came here, I was really struggling with Miniakin. But it flows right out now, so. So that's a 50,000-foot building. It's basically the same thing, you know, we're after the same fish type of tenants, you know. We're mostly really, you had that whole warehousing zone thing going on. And we agreed to it in the first project. And to our happiness, we were able to lease it to mostly people that complied with the zone, with the warehousing thing. Then you guys changed it, came back in, you did the thing with resolution. But anyway, in general, we've been getting big, kind of bigger tenants doing distribution and warehousing mostly. But we have some other ones that fit into the other category of, so far, there has not really been any recreation or anything like that. So anyway, the second one is on Miniakin. We just paved the parking lot and the shell of the building is up. And it's the same architecture, more or less. And this is directly across the street. And the owners of the, of these two on Miniakin were the same, whoever, you know. So we don't really, we don't even, we don't own this land yet. We're in contract, we're supposed to close it, I think in June. But, um, no, so far, it's been great. And you know, I think I told the board the first time. You know, we've, you know, my dad started a flex industrial building, a park in Hillsborough, New Jersey, back in the, in the early 80s. And, you know, so we were in Hillsborough and our main office was there and everything. And for years, Rob, who's been with us for 36 years, he was always saying, you guys should find some land in Raritan Township, Flemington. He says, there's, he's always getting people that want to, that have, you know, would, they're coming to us, but they would rather be over here. And then we stumbled into these opportunities. So, so far, it's, we're doing good. And, yeah, that's it. We self-manage, you know, well, we manage the properties ourselves. And we do all the leasing ourselves.
And the proposal tonight will operate generally like the other two, is that correct?
Same thing.
Same thing.
Same thing, yeah.
Nothing further, Mr. Gardner, I just thought you'd give a little bit of background to sort of the stage. Any board questions for Mr. Gardner? I do not expect that we have anybody from the public with us this evening, but I have to ask if anybody has a question for Mr. Gardner, based upon his testimony. There being none, thank you. Our next witness is our site engineer, Mr. Michael Ford. Previously sworn and you've been accepted on prior occasions by this board, but some of your qualifications.
Yes.
If I may, in the interest of time, we've met Mr. Ford many times.
Okay.
And he's given us his CV. And he's a little suspect, but.
Mr. Chairman, Michael, with that in mind.
I don't know what to say now.
I usually accept it as a qualified site engineer. I'm going to turn it over to you to introduce the site and bring us through the development proposal.
Sure, okay. We had submitted some color exhibits prior to the last hearing and then also updated proposed rendering for this evening's hearing. I don't know if any of those can be pulled up. I have one on the easel now, which is maybe a good segue from Mr. Gardner's testimony because it, we had a meeting with some staff and board members prior to our first scheduled hearing. And it was suggested that perhaps we bring in a rendering that shows all three projects. And that's what's on the easel.
Okay.
And if, who, what's the signal if I'm going too slow or talking too much?
Well.
We need to.
Yeah, so, Mike, if you want, you could bring that closer to them if you want. And do you want me to show the one that's revised? Or do you want the original one from the?
We don't need the old one. Okay, so.
We're going to mark that A.
All right. A1 is the vicinity exhibit dated October 1st, 2024. And this was previously submitted electronically. Today's the 18th?
Yes.
And then if I just go quickly through the other two exhibits so we can mark them. A2 would be the existing conditions exhibit dated April 19th, 2024, last revised August 14th, 2024. And that was a color exhibit that was again submitted electronically prior to the last hearing. And then just the last exhibit that probably will be the focus of this evening's discussion is a proposed feature exhibit dated April 19th, 2024, last revised November 29th, 2024. And this is really the only new exhibit that was presented since the last hearing. And it's a colorized version of our site plan with landscaping also shown on the plan. So the, in the interest of time, I'll just go quickly back to A1 that I started with. And just as a matter of orientation, Miniakin Road is about in the middle of the page. River Road is down the right-hand side. Route 31 would be off the page to the left. And you see the first project, Flemington Junction One with access from River Road and 150,000 square feet of warehouse. Just off the page at the top is the Diamond Nation Complex. And then on the south side or bottom of the page is Flemington Junction Two, which is a 50,000-square-foot warehouse building that is under construction now. The building is up, but as Mr. Gardner said, the parking's been paved. So they're in the process of finishing the construction of that project, including the building itself. And then the subject of this evening's hearing is what we're referring to as Flemington Junction Three, which is two buildings totaling about 35,000 square foot each for a total of 70,000 square feet. And it fills in that gap between Project One and Project Two. Fronting on Miniakin Road with the Miniakin stream to the rear. Buildings will be serviced by public sewer and water. We are proposing three driveways from Miniakin Road. With regards to traffic circulation, you'll see at the rear of the buildings, we have truck loading docks on an angle. So to facilitate appropriate circulation through the site for trucks and access to those angled parking or loading docks at the rear of the building, we're proposing trucks to enter what is the westerly or the left driveway here and be able to circulate through the rear of the site. And then they would be able to back into those loading spaces. A truck would also have an option of entering the middle driveway and again circulating in a clockwise fashion through the rear of the site and backing into those loading spaces. And that would also include a truck entering from River Road direction. That is headed westbound on Miniakin Road would be able to make a left in the center driveway or a left in the westerly driveway and circulate through the back of the site in a clockwise fashion. One of the technical waivers we have as part of the application is in your ordinance with one-way access. There's a prohibition against or a request that it be in a counterclockwise fashion in discussion with our traffic engineer. We, we're seeking relief for that because we're proposing in a clockwise fashion. And we suspect that the ordinance was written around one-way circulation where there's a pickup or drop-off window. And that would avail the access for the driver-side window. And we, in discussions with the board's professionals, have found no objection to this traffic circulation pattern. And as Mr. Schmanowicz said, we'll have a traffic engineer perhaps come with, you know, up later with some more details. Across the front of the building will be parking for standard vehicles with doors to access the building, both man doors and drive-in, like a roll-up door, a smaller door. We're proposing landscaping to buffer the proposed parking across the front from Miniakin Road. We're proposing our trash enclosures, three of them along the rear of the site. As I stated earlier, there's services for public water and sewer in Miniakin Road. We've proposed connections for that. And both of the buildings would be sprinkled. With regards to environmental constraints, we're familiar with the Miniakin Creek having done Flemington Junction One. As part of that application, there was a detailed stream study that was submitted and reviewed and approved by NJDEP for a flood hazard area permit for Flemington One. We filed for a similar permit for Flemington Junction Three with an updated study because since the last approval for Flemington One, the state standards have changed. That's with regards to rainfall data used for those types of studies. So there's been updated studies done and that's pending at DEP for both the flood hazard area verification, which approves the study and the flood elevation on the site. And also, there's a pending wetland application. There was a freshwater wetland LOI approved for the site. So the wetland limits have been approved by NJDEP. And we have a small intrusion into the wetlands for part of the project construction. While I'm speaking to the stream, we're cognizant, again, having done Flemington One, the township's stream corridor ordinance. So we've delineated the 100-foot buffer from the top of bank from the stream. And part of our application seeks, and this is outlined in the ordinance as permitted, but permitted with the request of a waiver. That is, we have respected the 75-foot setback from the stream bank with the only exception being our discharge from the onsite stormwater management. And for the people that get excited about stormwater management, I'm going to go right into that right after I speak to this issues with regards to the stream. So, so one of our requests for relief is that small intrusion in that 75-foot buffer for the discharge for the detention basin. But, but for that intrusion, there's no other impacts proposed to that 75, first 75 feet from the stream. And then as your ordinance permits, there's temporary regrading or disturbance of the area from 75 feet to 100 feet. So to facilitate the loading area and parking area at the rear of the building, there's some temporary disturbance for regrading in order to construct that improvement within that 75 feet to 100-foot buffer setback from the top of bank per the town ordinance. And again, that requires relief in the form of a waiver. What I'd also like to point out is, again, of course, that stormwater detention basin discharge goes through that 75 to 100 feet as well. But I'd like to point out at this time is, just prior to our last hearing, we discussed, which, you know, wasn't, was postponed until this evening, and thank you for the special meeting. The board professionals of both your engineer, your landscape architect, we talked about the proposal and the activities within that 75 feet to 100-foot stream corridor section of the township code. And there was one tree by this trash enclosure behind our, our westerly building.
I'm sorry, if I could interrupt, could you use the larger exhibit?
Oh, sure.
Because it's hard with that regional one.
Yeah, yeah.
Are we doing a review that right now then of all the reports? Or are we just still getting the overview?
I'll give you overview and I'll go right into the reports, right after storm drainage.
It looks like you're calling out some of the elements in the report, so.
I just, well, as I speak, I want to at least address the portions in the ordinance that suggested testimony be provided. I'm trying to hit those bases, yes.
We'll hit it again.
Okay, all right. So we're just speaking to one tree and the existing trees were mapped and surveyed on the site plans. And now I'm referring to A3. And I was just speaking to the intrusions into the township's stream corridor. There was a suggestion just prior to the last hearing that the applicant consider ways to preserve that tree. It's a 24-inch caliber tree. And the, while the ordinance would permit its removal and regrading of that area, and certainly with the removal of the tree comes the tree mitigation requirement. So effectively, if the tree were removed, we'd, we'd have to plan about eight or nine other trees. It, it's a diameter calculation. And I'll tell you that our tree mitigation plan is part of the site plan submittal includes the mitigation as if that tree were removed. But what we've also done, you know, as part of those discussions, which I think were very, you know, positive and helpful with the board professionals, was the consideration of providing, instead of regrading that area, a small retaining wall around the drip line of that tree such that that tree could be preserved. And we've included that on the plans that you're looking at this evening. On our grading plan, if you've, you looked at it, there's a actual, like a inset or a small view of an optional grading of that area which shows the retaining wall. What the board needs to know as part of that proposal is that that would include another structure within that 75 to 100-foot stream corridor buffer area, which technically would require waiver for a structure within that area. So in addition to the discharge from the detention basin would be this additional retaining wall around that tree. If the board were to feel, as the board professionals felt, that it was a positive aspect of being able to preserve that tree. And the applicant would do it either way. You know, they would, with the additional expense, put in the retaining wall to preserve the tree. Certainly during construction, there would have to be methods utilized to preserve not only that tree, but the other trees beyond the area of disturbance in the form of stakeout prior to construction, super silt fence for our limits of disturbance, and then tree protection in the form of snow fence or other construction fence to map out those trees that are be preserved, which would include that tree if we did the retaining wall around it, as well as some street trees along our front edge. There's about three trees that we're being asked to try to preserve up there as well. Perhaps I go to stormwater now, just an overview of how we're addressing that. So it's underground basins. There's an underground basin at the rear of the property, under the loading and rear access driveway. That's our primary larger basin, if you will. It's a large-scale subsurface infiltration basin that its primary function is for water quality. Again, the new stormwater regs require not only stormwater management mitigation measures to reduce the quantity peak flow discharge for the two 10- and 100-year storm, but they also require measures for groundwater recharge and then water quality measures. So.
Mike, Michael, if I can interrupt, I think it might be helpful to the board if you have, if you have Mr. Vacarella's report dated December 12th. I, I think if you could use his report as your presentation outline and go literally in the order of items as he calls it out. This way, everybody can follow the bouncing ball and we can make sure that nothing is missed.
Sure.
If you can provide that flexibility, I think it would be very helpful.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so we're looking at the, we have three reports?
Yeah, the December 12th, 2024.
We'll do the planning first?
Yeah.
Then, then engineering and then landscaping?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. All right, I'm going right to page two on Mr. Vacarella's report. With regards to the variance relief, items one, two, and three, I spoke to items one and two already with regards to the disturbances within township's stream corridor. And then with regards to item three at the top of page two, we've updated our calculation and identified that there are no steep slopes that qualify per the township's methodology of calculating steep slopes on the site. So there's no requirement for any disturbance of steep slopes on the site. So item three was a prior relief that we had identified that's no longer applicable.
Can you just describe just the methodology that you did use versus what you did submit?
Sure, yeah. And then the plans have been updated to reflect the current methodology. And page two of the plans identify the section of the ordinance that we referred to for compliance with the town code and the method of doing the steep slope analysis. And basically, it's that if you have a steep slope area, the way you calculate it is over a 10-foot contour interval. So in other words, and maybe this is the simplest way to describe it, is you might have a slope that's a steeper slope or a strong slope along a roadside ditch that only is over a two-foot fall. That doesn't qualify for the steep slope calculation or critical area in the ordinance because what the ordinance is identifying is areas where those slopes, those stronger slopes are over a much greater differential and vertical change, like, like a side of a mountain where the differential in elevation is 10 feet. And we don't have any of those that qualify on this site. We do have some steeper slopes, but they don't travel over a vertical change in elevation of a minimum of 10 feet per the town code requirement. Back to Mr. Vacarella's report, page two. There was a request for testimony with regards to the multiple tenants or different uses on the site. We've identified warehouse and flex space in our parking analysis. And we understand that if there's more than one tenant in a building, the use has to be in accordance with the I2 zone standard. And any certificate of occupancy for that use in that tenant would be subject to review and approval by Mr. Vacarella as part of the zoning permit and certainly as part of a CO.
Right, now, I would just add that we would keep open all of the uses in the I2 zone. We kind of know what kind of tenant we're going to get for Mr. Gardner's testimony, but nevertheless, whatever's allowed in the I2 zone could be a potential user. But again, parking would have to be complied with per Mr. Ford's testimony.
Okay, thank you. Numbers? Okay, yes, I was on number five. Number four is just a statement of fact of the size of the two buildings and the size of the lot. We're at 5.76 acres on number four in Mr. Vacarella's report. We're five acres is required, so we comply. And then the two buildings are specifically just slightly over 35,000 square feet each for a total of just over 70,000 square feet total. Now, back down to item six refers to the steep slope ordinance. And that's been addressed by my testimony regarding item number three above. Item seven, we do show on the plans a conservation, proposed conservation easement in accordance with the township code and would comply with the township code with regards to the establishment of that conservation easement over the critical area or the string corridor portion at the rear of the site or the north side of the site. We've identified that proposed easement. That would include the monumentation and signage. And again, we're actually familiar with that requirement, having addressed it on the Flemington Junction One site.
And this includes, and this includes the 75-foot no disturbance buffer and not the no structure buffer, 100-foot buffer?
Correct, correct. And the only intrusion within the 75-foot buffer would be, as I stated earlier, the discharge from the underground detention basin. I think item eight is just, there's two lots today. We combine them to one lot and we need a new lot number assigned by the tax. and we need a new lot number assigned by the tax assessor. So we shall comply with that. Item two, or I'm sorry, item nine, I think we've addressed that in our written response. There's 142 parking spaces proposed as part of the application. Thirty-two of those spaces are being proposed to be banked so they'd be constructed if and when needed for parking. And this is similar, and I think I'll say a lesson learned from Flemington Junction two across the street, where when we went through the process of that application, there were, there was board discussion that if you could, you know, you designed for full build-out of the parking in accordance with the ordinance, but if you don't think you need it, don't build it day one, bank it, and that's what we've done. That said, we've complied with the maximum impervious coverage allowable for the zone, even if all the bank parking is built. And we've also designed our stormwater management facilities as if all the bank parking was built. And that also holds true for the landscaping proposal as if the bank parking is built. Does the board prefer that I continue one by one on these items?
Well, where it's applicable, so like for example, item 10, it's been called out that you satisfied that. So I think you can move on through 11. That would be an example of how I think like the.
Okay. I just want to highlight that that was satisfied. Very good. Thank you. All right. Item 11, I've highlighted a couple of waivers as part of the application already. This is an additional waiver that is with regards to the placement of sidewalk on the site. There's a technical requirement that a sidewalk be provided between the building or between the parking in front of the building and the building. In this case, as I described earlier, and I'm looking back at A three, the exhibit, we're showing parking along the front of the building toward Miniakin Road and then a paved area up to the building because there are some drive-in doors for the flexible use of the space and then man doors to enter the building. So the front entrance, you know, the front of the building is established for pedestrian entrance. And with regards to the walkway, the paved area, if you will, the parking area provides for hard surface for people to access the site. I think it's just really, I'll say, a technical waiver request because it's not an official sidewalk, if you will. Same for item 12. It was highlights us that there's a, perhaps a code requirement that sidewalks be provided along the frontage. The site fronts on Miniakin Road, but there are no existing sidewalks on either of the properties to the east or west of the site, nor were there sidewalks as part of Flemington Junction two, and we're seeking that relief for Flemington Junction three as well. Item 13, I think, has been satisfied. We are providing for EV charging stations as required in the parking area in accordance with the town code and the governor's action about two years ago. Item 14 is satisfied. Item 15, there are no, and this is a request for testimony, so I'll speak to it. There are no canopies proposed along the front of the building. The building is set at, and this is one of the results of some recent zoning changes. The building is set 100.5 feet back from the right-of-way of Miniakin Road. So the building is beyond the front yard setback and complies. And unlike, I'll say, a slight differential between this site and Flemington Junction two across the street, we're not proposing any canopies over the door entrances. There'll be just a flat wall along the front of the building, no canopies. And I think your planner, Mr. Vacarello, just wanted to make sure that we state on the record that that's the case here. And then with regards to signage, in the absence of canopies, there's no signage, obviously, on a canopy because that's not being proposed. But you'll see Mr. Testa has a rendering that shows that there are opportunities for tenant signage over the different unit spaces across the front of the building. And no relief is being requested for the signage. The signage will comply with your code. Item 17 is identified or has been confirmed and satisfied. Item 18, I just spoke to with regards to the canopy and provided testimony. Again, there's no canopies. Item 19 is with regards to the building color and style, and I don't want to steal Mr. Testa's thunder here. I'll let the architect speak to the color of the building and its look. But I understand it would be similar to Flemington Junction two across the street. Item 20, it's been satisfied. Item 21, I think I just spoke to the tenant identification and to the extent there's any code requirement regarding building numbering or tenant identification with regards to emergency use, we would comply. Item 23, we're not proposing any outdoor storage with the exception of those areas where there's trash enclosures. And to the extent that there's, you know, opportunities next to a dumpster where a pallet could be placed, and that would perhaps address any concerns there might be, but we're not proposing any outdoor storage exclusively for pallets. So that would provide for an opportunity within the trash enclosure areas for pallets to be temporarily placed and then disposed of properly.
Mike, you may have jumped over number 22.
Oh, did I? Okay. Okay. That's, again, I'll say I'll defer to the architect with regards to the building height and the placement of HVAC units. Twenty-four shall comply. It identifies that the site has 31 EDUs attributed to it from the RTM UA. We've received a review report from the RTM UA verifying that as well. And the applicant will comply with the restrictions and limitations of the 31 EDUs. And we don't anticipate that that'll have any restriction on the use of the buildings. That's more than enough sanitary sewer discharge allocation for the anticipated uses. Item 25, I'll defer to our traffic engineer with regards to the traffic report. And then item 26 refers to a conditional approval review report that we received from the Hunterdon County Planning Board. And it appears that in that conditional approval, there was an erroneous request that a left-turn lane be striped at the intersection of Miniakin Road and River Road. And a quick look at an aerial view or even driving by that area, you'll see that it actually already exists, the left-turn lane.
Is there a way for them to revise a report stating that or any additional?
We can contact the county and point out the erroneous comment and ask if they could provide it for clearer record.
Sure.
Yeah. Item 27, we'll get to the architectural comments shortly. We agree to complying with the request for state plane coordinates under item 28. Item 29 refers to the proposed conservation easement I spoke to earlier, which is, you know, close to four acres. Thirty, we'd agree to providing the required as-built and CD with the as-built at the time of CO issuance. Again, item 31 is a township requirement that the applicant would comply with. And the same for item 32. And then with regards to item 33, we had received a report from the fire official dated September 24th, 2024. And we did, as part of our December 6th submittal since the last scheduled hearing, provided a response to each and every one of those comments. And I believe we've addressed them all satisfactorily. But again, we would agree to addressing each and every one of those comments in that September report to Dennis's satisfaction.
Thank you.
Yep. And that's with regards to knock boxes and.
Can we just get a call out of all the elements where they're requiring a variance exception?
Sure, the only, it's only one and two with regards to the stream quarter.
Eleven and 12.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. I don't think it was listed in the Mr. Vacarello's report, but I think in the engineer's report we're about to go to, there is that technical waiver that I spoke to earlier about the traffic circulation pattern for one-way traffic. That's code section 296-9075-C2G. Should I go to the engineer's report now? I'll go to page three of 11. This is a December 11th, 2024 review memorandum to the planning board by Environmental Resolutions, Inc., Rakesh Darji, the board's engineer.
Question, December 11th or 12?
Did I say 11th? It's 12th.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Yes, December 12th. I'm going right to page three of 11. And what I'll say is before I even go to each and every comment, I think as we go through this, and you'll see that since the last scheduled hearing, our December 6th submittal satisfied virtually all the comments. I think there's only one or two that have suggested testimony. And then there were one or two new comments with minor changes that we would agree to address to Mr. Darji's satisfaction as a condition of approval that the board may grant. But so back to page three. With regards to the zoning, we're in the I-2 zone. Under variances, we just spoke to those in Mr. Vacarello's report. And then with regards to waivers, here's that waiver I just spoke to with regards to the one-way traffic circulation pattern. It's identified as item number two under the heading waivers. Item three is with regard to the sidewalk waiver that I think we've already spoken to. And then item four is, I'll say something we haven't spoken to yet. That is identifying a restriction in your code that says you can have a parking area, but no parking area with less than four spaces in a row. And we've identified some small areas of parking along the rear of the building where there's as little as two spaces. And the purpose of that is to provide for parking at the rear of the building along the building, but not interfere with the man doors or drive-in doors at the rear of the building. Under general comments, item five, provide testimony, the anticipated hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. With regards to employees, as we've identified on the site plans, under the parking calculation for a warehouse type of facility, we anticipate up to as many as 70 employees, and that would be max. And with regards to a flex use, 94 employees. Waste generation and scheduled pickups, we've identified three trash enclosure areas at the rear of the building. They're a great distance from Miniakin Road. And the applicant has already proven his ability to have those operate efficiently for the tenants. It would be a private waste taller picking up the waste. And that provides for flexibility that if two dumpsters need to be emptied, you know, twice a week instead of once a week in order to provide for and assure that that trash enclosure is adequate space, they would do that. So that's the, I'll say, the testimony with regards to the operation of the trash. It's in those designated areas. It would be at a frequency as necessary to make sure those designated areas are adequate. And while I'm on this, the one comment I think will, or one of the few comments within the technical aspect of the report was a suggestion that with these 18-foot-wide trash enclosures, we provide a little larger gate. Right now, we're proposing a 12-foot gate width. And we'd agree to put a 16-foot gate. That is two eight-foot swing gates in front of each one of those trash enclosures. So that provides even greater ability to access that entire 10-by-18 area that's the designated trash enclosure area. And then item D, under item five, in general comments, refers to the types of trucks and deliveries. I've spoken generally to that. But I would defer to our traffic engineer to give you some greater information in that regard. But what I will say to the board at this point is, and we'll get to this in a moment, but while we're on the topic of trucks, there was a request that we do a, we've done truck turning templates in the site plans. There's a site plan sheet that illustrates how emergency vehicles can get through the site, how garbage trucks can get through the site, as well as tractor trailers. And we've identified how a WB55 tractor trailer can circulate adequately through the site with all the turning movements, with more than enough area to make those movements. But we've also tested the WB67, as Mr. Darji had suggested. And we found that there are some places on site where that really doesn't fit without, say, having to drive into oncoming traffic at a exit driveway. So the applicant would agree to a restriction that the site not permit the WB67 tractor trailers. And again, with, if there's more discussion with regards to traffic, would defer to our traffic engineer. Item six, just affirms that the two lots, the existing lots will be consolidated. There are lots 16.078, I'm sorry, 16.07 and lots 16.08. And we just need a new lot number from your tax assessor. And those two lots would be consolidated by deed. There'd be a new deed with a description for the two lots combined and the new. I'm getting a signal.
Counsel.
Oh, I was clearing my throat. But yeah, I think because the report indicates it's either it's satisfied or will be consolidated. The way I read the report, I think you could jump to item 12 on page four. That's the next item that.
Testimony.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. And then you could go down to 19 would be after that, and only the second half, because the first half has been satisfied.
Yes. There's abundance of satisfied comments with regards to chapter or item 12. I think I've actually already spoken to that as to the traffic circulation patterns and to the extent there needs to be some changes in signage on the site plan, we would comply. Item 19, this is with regards to the alternate grading that I had discussed earlier as part of the introduction to preserve the one tree by our northeasternally trash enclosure.
It's particularly the second part because you did talk about the first part, but I don't recall testimony with respect to the second issue in paragraph 19 regarding the lighting located by the stream quarter.
That we did, we do show all the improvements. That is the curbing on the rear loading area, as well as the site lighting and foundations for the lighting are beyond the stream quarter, the 100-foot.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm satisfied with that. And the applicant indicated that they'll stake out the actual limited clearing with super silt fence and all that. And the look, the structures that are, that are close will definitely be staked out. So as it's shown on the plan, does comply. Our question was, you're getting kind of close to that line. So how are you going to ensure that you don't cross the line? They've proposed a survey control to make sure that does happen. With regard to the alternate grading with the retain wall, I think the, it's great that it's shown as an alternate because I think that's something that maybe we could take a look at at the time of construction with Mr. Thomas's office and our office to make sure that that the trees, actually in the location where it's shown on the plan, because you know, sometimes things tend to move. And then also that there's enough clearance. And then also that there's enough clearance from the retaining wall to make sure the tree actually does survive. We don't want you to go through the this whole elaborate grading to try to save this this tree, and then the tree, you know, dies anyway. So that's something that we'd have to evaluate at the time of construction.
Okay.
And if you go down that road, I believe a variant is implicated.
That's correct.
Containing wall in the preservation area.
And I think I've talked to Mr. Thomas, and I think we're both in support of of that relief to try to save that tree.
Yeah, that's that's correct, and I would just. Yeah, that's correct. I'd be in support of it. And and the other part of it is, is I did have a chance to, I did walk the site. I wasn't particularly focused on that single tree. I think it's decent, but at the time of construction, we can evaluate the condition of the tree, and if it's not worth saving, we can, we can go another direction, but at least we have the flexibility.
And we can save you a couple of bucks on the retaining wall.
We should, we show both options. I think what's being suggested is, of the board, we're so inclined to want to do the option of preserving the tree, you grant us the relief, but we still leave on the plan both options. So in case during construction, it's determined that the tree is is not preservable, then we would implement the other option.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Okay.
That's what I was trying to say.
I was on page four of eleven, item nineteen. I'll go to page five of eleven, item twenty-six A, just to highlight that we've acquiesced, and this was actually part of our December sixth submittal that we would agree to the prohibition of the WB sixty-seven trucks. So I won't talk about all the other satisfied comments on that page, and then I.
So I do have, there are a lot of satisfied comments. You did, you guys did a great job. There you go, Mike. You've been asking for that. I do have a question about the restriction on the WB sixty-sevens. How is that going to be enforced and released?
We could do it with our leases and our tenants.
I think, I think the concern here, W, the largest trucks that are allowed on the road are WB sixty-sevens. WB fifty-five is not a template that's even in the ASHTO policy and geometry design of highways and streets. It goes like WB, WB sixty-two, WB sixty-seven, WB fifty. There's not WB fifty-five template in there. You did, you did have a template in in the plan, so so I did see a template. From what I could see, it's a slightly smaller truck than a WB sixty-seven. My concern is, how are you going to prevent, you've got potentially truck drivers coming in from eleven who could have a WB sixty-seven truck? You know, how are they going to be prevented from, they got to make a delivery to the site? You know, if, you know what I'm saying? How do you, how do you differentiate in a semi-truck between a WB fifty-five and a WB sixty-seven? It's a little difficult. You're going to have to specify on the sign, no trucks over such and such length trailers. It's going to get a little, a little cumbersome probably to specify the difference between WB fifty-five and WB sixty-seven. Just, just an observation.
Would it be difficult to redo the curbing so that you can allow the WB?
Well, it's, it's really the, it's the, it's interesting, because everybody is, what we're talking about is a turning template where the truck exiting the site doesn't cross the double yellow line in the middle of the road, where Miniakon Road is a low-level traffic. And how many of us, please put your hand up, if you've never seen a tractor trailer go through an intersection without crossing into oncoming traffic? Or it's, you know, that's not uncommon. And we did test it. We can include the WB sixty-seven worksheet that we did to show those areas where there's slight intrusions to oncoming, and that goes for also going into our site. Like a truck, a truck making a left coming from Route one thirty, or I'm sorry, Route thirty-one, making a left into our first westerly driveway. If we have a car exiting, theoretically, that truck may interfere that car. And you, I sensed from the nod where you had like, that's not a, it's not, it's, it's, it's something we, if we wanted to say it's, it's a perfect world, we wouldn't have any crossing, but to make that driveway wide enough to provide for that type of flexibility is great.
From the applicant's point of view, as was stated earlier, I mean, all we can do is, you know, accept the condition, if board's inclined to approve this, that would be a restriction on the WB sixty-seven. And that condition could also require that we put those type of restrictions in our leases and advise our tenants. And I guess, is there possibly a signage to that effect? I don't know if that's.
Right. And we've already talked about Flemington Junction one and two. This was, all the truck turning templates we used for one and two were the WB fifty-five, and the the issue never came up.
Well, I, to be honest, I didn't.
No, no, I'm not saying history. It's not like we ignored it, like we knew about it before, and we didn't ignore it here. And actually, what I'll say too, having been for mayor, I know with Flemington one and Flemington two, both of the, all three of the driveway entrances here are just as great, if not greater than what we did on Flemington two across the street.
It's just my only concern. Typically, when I see these sites, they're designed for WB sixty-sevens. So it's just my concern. I'm seeing WB fifty-five, which is a little atypical. And, you know, how do we, you know, if, if, if it's limit, I guess, I'm speculating here, but I guess if the language is such in a lease is that they're not supposed to have it, that the tenants are not supposed to have their deliveries be a truck larger than a WB fifty-five. Guess that's it. Now, you can put that in the language of lease, let's prevent it. That's, that's a concern. And, and, you know, I mean, it's one thing if you get an occasional truck that goes over the center line. It's another thing if the truck gets inside the site and there's not enough room for it to maneuver. Now, you know, you got a problem. So maybe it's a good idea if you if you show the WB sixty-seven and see where to, you know, provide that information, and we see where the incursions would be of a WB sixty-seven that, you know, where where it goes off, like if it goes over the curb, if it's got to go, you know, over the center line, just to see what what the implications are of a WB sixty-seven's truck going through the site, you know, coming to the site or leaving the site.
We can absolutely do that. As I recall, there was no issues like what you're describing where, for example, it goes in and it's, it's traversing down this westerly driveway and can't make the turn.
That would be, that would be a real concern.
Yeah, that doesn't get stuck. No, no, it's not. It's more what I described earlier where, you know, our, our, our goal is to have absolutely no impacts to other lanes.
Understood.
Yeah.
Did, did we not discuss it in the other plan? I thought we had widened the exit and entry on points to Miniakon to.
I think you're right. I was just looking.
Because we had this discussion about the intrusion upon the opposing lane. So again, the type of truck was not discussed, but the issue of encroaching in the other lane, we did discuss. And I thought we had widened the exit and entry to accommodate for that turn.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we've done that here, and we've actually done it in a fashion that's unlike across the street where we had. This is pavement the whole width, not the malleable curb, if you will. And these are as wide and as big a turning radiuses as across the street.
But so just to be clear, so on Flemington Junction two, that was for the, for a WB fifty-five, though?
Correct.
Right, right. And that's.
Okay. That was only to help a WB fifty-five getting in and out.
Yes.
Worse, okay.
I don't think we ever got specific about.
No, no, we did not. We just had a truck turning radius, so we paid attention.
Just looking at this first exhibit. I'm not a truck driver. This, this is, it's a whole lot more room in the site that's under construction for a truck to come in and come around than in the new, seems like a sharper turn to your point, sir, right? Sorry, I don't remember your name, but the problem is, once they get in there, they get not able to maneuver them.
Right, that's a real, it's one thing to go on the centerline, they don't probably, you know, in there. You know, we could go over the centerline, it's not that big of a deal. And, and like you said, Tim, you know, once you get in sight, if they can't maneuver because it's bigger than what they allow for, then you got a problem. You know, if you provide a template for WB sixty-seven, that'll, that'll answer the question.
So then. Well, we see what happens. The bollards.
Oh, yeah.
Are no more.
That was a mistake.
So it, would it be your recommendation that if the, with the WB sixty-seven turning radius, if the conflicts can be resolved, that the restriction be removed?
Yes, well, not the restriction be removed, because we, it still is not, okay, without splitting hairs here. It's still, to get in and out of sight from the road, still would require a WB sixty-seven truck to go across both lanes, where WB fifty-five would not, from what I'm understanding here.
Correct.
Right. So it doesn't make the problem go away, but at least if we see that a WB sixty-seven can maneuver within the site, then that takes away a lot of problems. The fact that you might, I think you still want a prohibition of anything larger than a WB fifty-five somehow, whether that's specified by no trucks, no trailers over a blank feet length or something like that, which I think a WB fifty-five is a little, maybe it's a forty-eight-foot trail instead of a fifty-three footer. I, I, I don't have the.
Fifty-three.
A WB fifty-five is a fifty-three?
Correct. I'm reading from the detail on sheet sixteen of our plan.
But it is a little bit smaller. I don't know if it's a smaller truck. It's a little bit smaller. Again, technical here, I know, but it's a little, it is small in a WB sixty-seven. And WB sixty-seven is the largest truck that's allowed in the state of New Jersey on public roads. So I just, so you could get a WB sixty-seven, even though that you use a WB fifty-five template. That was my only concern. And if you show, provide a temp, the WB sixty-seven, you can look at it. I don't imagine there'll be a problem.
What we're saying is, if you can provide your illustration that shows that WB sixty-seven, if it does get to the site, doesn't get trapped on the site and can circulate through the site, I think that would satisfy our concerns. We'd still recommend a, some sort of deed language that discourages that WB sixty-sevens from, from being used. But at least we're assured that if it does happen, the only real, you know, crime here is that it may encroach over the center line when it's exiting the site, which on a low-volume road like this isn't, isn't the end of the world. So I think that's what we're looking for, is just the illustration, so that WB sixty-seven can do everything else except understanding that it's going to cross over the center line, and then we're good.
So, so to recap, it sounds like what the discussion is, is that what, what the board professionals are asking is for the applicant to confirm that an inadvertent entry of a, of a WB sixty-seven-sized truck could actually get through without wreaking havoc, right? And then, then, but you will ultimately agree as a condition to nothing larger than the WB fifty-five, which you will enforce by, by lease agreements with your tenants, as well as signage, which will say trucks prohibited over fifty-three feet in length. Okay?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes. I'll go to page six of eleven, just item twenty-eight at the top, since it's not identified as satisfied. And I've already spoken to earlier, the outfall for the basin at the rear of the site being shifted to save some trees. There was also an existing easement back at the rear of the site that it's been shifted to avoid. And I think I stated earlier that we do have approvals pending with NJZEP for that stream enclosure or flood hazard area permit. I'll go to page seven of eleven. And I'm going to skip over acknowledged, just like the satisfied.
And just so you know, I'm interpreting acknowledged as conditions. Right?
Yeah, I think acknowledged is, yes.
Okay.
And, and the, the, the item that's acknowledged specifically states that, that we have complied with the stormwater management rules that I described earlier. I'll go to page eight. And say, yay. Pass that, page nine.
Again, but just to confirm, we're on the same page, or page. Item fifty-two, which says acknowledged, you would agree that's a, that's a condition, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Item twelve, there is a, a number of items satisfied. The acknowledged ones would be agreed to as a condition of approval.
What page and item are you on, Mike?
I'm on page twelve.
Page nine.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, page nine. I said page nine. Yeah, page nine, items.
Six and fifty-seven.
Correct.
Conditions, right?
Right. And then the heading under traffic, I'll leave to our traffic engineer to address. I'm going to page ten of eleven. We're almost there. Testimony.
Yeah, you provided that.
I did that already regarding seventeen, I'm sorry, seventy-two. And then on the last page, eleven of eleven, there are three administrative comments that I would believe would be, you know, if they need to be conditions of approval, like respond then to comments in a point-by-point. You know, obviously, items seventy-nine, eighty, and eighty-one, we agree to. And then with regards to new comments, items eighty-two and eighty-three, we agree to address. The last review memorandum to speak through this evening is a December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four memorandum to the planning board by Mr. Thomas. I'll go to the bottom of that page and highlight the comment responses are in red, and it says has complied, so I'll skip that. I'll go to page two. Under comments in the middle with a large paragraph, starting with the words, "there appear to be," and I'll say that that has already been discussed and refers to the alternate grading to preserve the tree that we've discussed. I don't think there's any other comments that we need to discuss or address on page two.
Before you said the stormwater outfall location, the stormwater outfall location, you said that has been moved?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Item three, or I'm sorry, page three. At the top of the page, there's highlighted new comments in red. This is with regards to the preservation of the three existing street trees along Miniakon Road. We've done some changes in the grade and identified them as a disturbance in tree protection. And I think that what the additional comment regarding that issue, we'd agree to comply with is a modification to the tree preservation area. Not just circles around the three trees, but more of a larger tree preservation fence. Is that what you are suggesting, Mr. Thomas?
Correct. Rather than just, some of the circles weren't quite big enough for the root zones anyway, but there are groups of trees. So it's better that we preserve, preserve a bigger area with a tree, a tree protection fences that includes, I think there's a group of three trees and then two trees and a single tree, and they should roughly coincide with the critical root zone areas that we require, which is a a foot of radius per caliber inch. And I think it appears that the grading will, that that'll be satisfactory.
Right. Yeah, we agree. So that the premise is that the trees are identified to be preserved, and the method of protecting them during construction not be an isolated fence around an individual tree, but more a collaborative, larger fence around a group of trees. And we'd agree to make those planned changes to Mr. Thomas's satisfaction. At the middle of page three, there are additional comments. At the end of the first paragraph, that the words, "this is acceptable," I believe our proposal is acceptable, so I won't discuss that. And then at the bottom of that middle section of highlighted red comments, there's a suggestion of modifications to the understory trees. And if, to the extent we can choose different species or identify different areas for those mitigation trees, we'd agree to do that to Mr. Thomas's satisfaction. Is that acceptable?
That's acceptable. That's correct. And the other comment there was just that we'll, we'll provide, we'll provide the reforestation planting detail. There's a, an official rarefied township detail that needs to be included.
And we'd agree to add that to the plans. In fact, Mr. Thomas has already graciously identified. And we'd agree to add that to the plans. In fact, Mister Thomas has already graciously identified or given us that detail within the last twenty four hours. So it's just a new, another detail that needs to be added to the plan to identify how trees are being preserved.
What's that? A waiver for the detail? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, the. It is, there is a waiver required, but in, in this case, the, the, the way the ordinance is stated, it allows the board to consider. Landscaping adjacent to the parking area to contribute to the parking lot landscaping and. And, and I'm basically supporting that. They provided a lot of landscaping in forms of offer and. Quite a few replacement trees near the parking area, so. So would a waiver then not be required? The waiver is required, but I'm recommending a waiver, I'm sorry. Thank you.
And then can I go to page four? Item five is, has complied and then item six at the bottom. New comments six B, there is mechanical treatment devices that are being proposed as part of our stormwater management, green infrastructure. They would have plantings in them and we provide, and these are, these are actually already incorporated as part of the project across the street. I think what the board suggested as a condition of approval there is that the plant selections be coordinated with Mister Thomas and that those. Mechanical treatment devices actually be provided with irrigation to ensure that they get enough water to. Ensure the survival of those plantings and we agree to do that.
Okay, that's acceptable and that's a, that's a, turns out that was a requirement of the manufacturer anyway, the irrigation. And, and we'll get a clarification, but there's a, a conflict in the notation on the plans. One, one where it states the manufacturer is going to supply the plant and then not, so we'll work through that. That's acceptable.
With respect to Mister Ford, right?
Mister Ford, correct.
So all board members, any other questions? No, and I'm required to ask if anybody is here from the public who has any questions on Mister Ford's testimony. I know we don't have anybody online. Nope, there being none. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, our next witness is our architect, Mister Michael Testa.
Yeah.
As far as court report, do you need a break? Are you okay? Michael, you've been sworn previously and I believe at least on our last application from Flemington two, you were qualified as an expert in architecture.
Yeah, for both Flemington one and Flemington.
So that is acceptable. Thank you, Mister Chairman. Michael, I'm going to turn it over to you to please give the board a summary of the architectural proposal and mark exhibits.
Okay, so the board that I placed up in front is a new exhibit. It's a color rendering, three dimensional rendering of the two buildings located on the site.
Which will be marked A four.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I'd like to discuss the, proposing two new buildings here as indicated on Mister Ford's plan. We have I call building one to the left of his plan, building two to the right. Buildings are almost mirrored buildings. Building one is thirty five thousand three hundred and forty three square feet. Building two, thirty five thousand two hundred and ninety four square feet. The buildings are subdivided, potentially subdivided for maximum tenant locations. This was decided based upon our leasing operators that as far as what we felt would be the best way to subdivide the space. There could be nine potential tenants in building one, eight potential tenants in building two. That would be the maximum number of tenants. You could have one tenant in each of the buildings, but that gives the board some idea of the flexibility of the building. So we go around the building, the building has storefront entrance ways facing Minniacan Road. And adjacent to those storefronts are overhead doors. The rear of the building has three sawtooth. Truck docks where the truck docks are depressed or actually lowered in grade. And then in the rear on the side, you have additional overhead doors for truck access.
Yes, a question. You say storefront openings. Is that glass where I see the?
Yes, there's a small glass area as part of this glass door. It is almost identical to what you've seen. Correct, small, small storefront areas that you see in Flemington one and two. The building height is thirty seven feet, six inches. That's the highest point. The highest point faces Minniacan, the roof slopes at the rear. So all water would drain toward the rear stormwater system. The color scheme is the same as the other two locations. It's a light gray main building area. Dark gray accents and a blue light, a blue signage strip. As we indicated, the other buildings had canopies. We've eliminated the canopies and we've basically taken a blue signage area that where the canopy would be mounted it to the wall and that's where the signage would go. If there was a tenant taking up multiple tenant areas, there would only be one signage for that. All rooftop equipment would be concealed. We, on the other two facilities, we've located the heating and air conditioning units inside. The building and put the condenser units on the roof, which are a much smaller unit than if you had a rooftop unit. For regular commercial buildings, minimize the impact of anything on the roof and those will not be seen from the street. Mister Vacarelli's letter of December twelfth, there are four items pertaining to architecture. Item number fifteen on page. One, two, three is regarding the canopy signage. I just testified to that, that we're not going to have canopies. We're going to have a wall mounted sign. With no variance requested, it will be in conformance with the signage ordinance. It will be similar color and size to the other two sites. Tenant signage, we have one located over each of the tenant doors facing Minniacan Road. Again, if there is more, for tenant taking up more than one area, they'll be limited to one sign. They won't be limited to taking four spaces. They won't get four signs. They'll get one for the four signs. Item number nineteen, architecture of the building. Again, I think color rendering speaks to the architecture, showing the aerial shot. Indicating the colors, textures, shapes and forms, keep the building interesting, colorful from the roadway. And then item number two, discussing the height of the building at thirty seven feet, six inches. And then again, the placement of the HVAC units located on the roof out of sight from the street and surrounding areas. How the interior of the building for the fire department has a CDU room for communication services for fire and emergency services. Located on the right hand side and Knox box will be provided for access for emergency as well. That concludes my overview.
I just have one.
Comment number twenty seven that referred to the landscape architect. John, did you have any comments?
This is Jeff's comment referring to you.
This is just, this is just a memo comment that the applicant in general, and I think that's already been addressed.
Got it. Thank you.
I just had one comment on the plan. It says that it's fifty square feet is the allowable signage. But you're stating that it would be seventeen square feet per tenant. Signage area and per the tenant.
Per tenant, correct.
So no other location with the tenant space would include a sign.
The signs will be located over the main entrance doors, same as Flemington one and Flemington two.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board questions, Mister Testa?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. From the public again, we don't have anybody. Our next witness is our traffic engineer, Mister Doug Poliniak. Doug, you were previously sworn. We do need to have you present your qualifications. I think you're.
For this application, yes. I'm a graduate of Lehigh University in Bethlehem, Pennsylvania. With bachelor's of science in civil engineering. I acquired my degree in nineteen ninety eight. Since that time, I've been working in the field of traffic engineering. I'm a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey for approximately the last twenty years. My license is in good standing. I've testified as an expert before over a hundred and ten municipal boards in the state of New Jersey. I have been within Raritan, but it's been some time now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug, if you could take us through a brief summary of your traffic study and then of course, address the review letters.
Yeah, absolutely. From a traffic engineering impact perspective. The application for this permitted use of about a seventy thousand square foot warehouse flex buildings, it's a pretty light case. To prepare or to review the peak hour characteristics of the traffic associated with this development. Our office originally prepared in April twelfth, two thousand twenty four, traffic impact analysis. And then we filed that up with a subsequent December fourth, two thousand twenty four response letter. That addressed the traffic related comments in the ERA letter. To go quickly, as you heard before from Mike, sites located on the northern side of Minniacan Road, which provides one lane for each direction of travel and an east west pattern. The signalized intersection with Route thirty one is to the west. The unsignalized T shaped stop controlled intersection with River Road is to the east. Post-it speed limit is forty miles per hour and land uses are similar to that proposed here. Especially considering under construction across the street is the fifty thousand square foot Flem two, similar use. Two buildings are proposed with three access driveways along Minniacan Road. All three driveways will provide left turn in and left turn egress movements. However, the easterly driveway will prohibit tractor trailer entrances as the site. Is going to work in a clockwise rotation for those large vehicles to circumnavigate the back of the building. Larger tractor trailers will not be able to access and mix with passenger vehicles in the front of the building. Now to prepare our analysis, we originally performed our traffic volume counts at Route thirty one in Minniacan on Tuesday, January thirty first. Two thousand twenty three from seven AM to nine AM and four to six thirty PM. Which is a standard commuter peak periods. Now, our original River Road counts were done back in March of two thousand twenty one. However, we had updated those counts based on recommendations provided in ERA, ERA's letter. Those updated counts were done last month, Wednesday, November twentieth from seven to nine AM and four to six thirty PM. And we did find that the more recent counts were a bit higher than those that were taken in our previous report. So what we did is update our analysis with those volumes. We updated the analysis to do a known building and build condition with and without the site traffic in the future. And to establish those future volumes, we took the existing volumes and we inflated them by NJDOT's growth factor of one percent. For this type of roadway in Hundred and County, we applied a two year growth rate for that one percent. We also added projects in the area, which include the one fifteen River Road project, which is operating. The project that's under construction across the street and as well as potential self storage facility up near the intersection of River Road and Bartles Corner Road. Now to project the peak hour trip generation associated with this site, we initially looked at the Institute of Transportation Engineers. Eleventh edition of the Trip Generation Manual for Warehousing. Based on a seventy thousand square foot building during the morning peak hour, the site would experience twenty five entering vehicles and seven exiting vehicles for a total of thirty two two way movements. In the evening, it would be understandably the reverse with ten entering, twenty five exiting for thirty five total movements. Now that results to about one vehicle that are turning into or out of the site every two minutes during the peak hour, which is a pretty low volume with respect to traffic impact. I should note that both the Institute of Transportation Engineers and NJDOT consider one hundred peak hour trips as significant. And in need of a traffic study because there could be potential impacts at offsite locations. This site, based on that IT data, is about one third of that significant, significant level showing. The minimally anticipated impact. Another interesting thing is that we did, as the board requested, we went now and did some research counts. At the one fifteen River Road site, the Flem one site to determine what type of trip rate is happening for a similar use and whether or not the IT data. Is appropriate for those uses. And we did those counts back in November twelfth from four to six PM and on November eleventh from seven to nine in the morning. When we did those counts, the site was about ninety percent occupied. So it's a hundred and fifty thousand square foot development with ninety percent occupancy. It was about a hundred thirty five thousand square feet. And what we found is that it's only generating twenty three morning peak hour trips and eighteen PM peak hour trips. So although the site's about twice the size of the proposed, it's generating almost half the traffic or about two thirds of the traffic. So what we did is then we took that trip ratio from those counts for the hundred thirty five thousand square foot building and we applied it to the seventy thousand square foot building. And found that this site, using that trip rate from that building, would generate about twelve AM trips. And nine PM trips, which is two and a half to three and a half times lower than what we included in our traffic report. So I can safely say that our traffic report is likely conservative with respect to the impacts, not only at the site driveways, but at offsite locations. So then we did a comparative level of service analysis at both the Route thirty one, Minniacan Road intersection, as well as the River Road intersection using our new counts. And using that conservative IT data, and we found that the levels of service not change with the inclusion of the site traffic. The, the site's only going to contribute about a maximum one and a half percent of the volumes at those locations, which is a, a, a pretty low amount. So it just demonstrates that using IT data, we found no degradations in level of service. But I think in fact, based on the data that we collected at the other site, our projections are high and there'll actually be lower traffic at this site. To touch upon that, we also looked at the trucks that were generated at Flemington one during those peak hours. And we found that there was only one tractor trailer entering during the morning peak hour and one exiting. So we find that warehousing and flex space. While there are, you know, maybe six bays at this location, it's not like you're going to have six cars coming, six trucks coming in the peak hour. It's kind of consistent over the course of the day with the employees coming in during those peak hours. But trucks accessing the site maybe one an hour over the course of the day. I also reviewed the site plan. Mike touched upon most of it. The levels of service at the three driveways will be B or better, B exiting, A entering. Parking spaces, a hundred and ten proposed, thirty two of those banked, which meets the ordinance requirements for either warehouse or a flex type space. Parking spaces for the passenger vehicles, nine foot wide by eighteen foot deep, which meet standard, typical design standards. The loading spaces will be in the back promoting a one way flow and a clockwise circulation for those larger vehicles. So overall, in conclusion, the site's been designed. To, to allow for efficient flow, segregate your tractor trailers and your passenger vehicles. The driveways will operate safe and efficiently at level of service B and using those conservative volumes, like I said. Will have very low impact towards any offsite impacts.
Doug, just one question. You heard the colloquy regarding the concern over the WB fifty five and WB sixty seven. Any thoughts or comments on that topic?
Yeah, quite a bit, actually. Like I said, when we looked at the Flem one site, there's a very low truck volume coming into and out of that site during those peak hours. So I believe Mike's going to demonstrate that the WB sixty seven vehicle can navigate the site and that won't become an issue. I think while we've agreed to limit the vehicles to WB fifty five. As long as that vehicle can navigate the site, I don't think there's going to be many conflicts of passenger vehicles and trucks. If a WB sixty seven were to access the site and overlap inbound and outbound traffic, it's just not that frequent of a movement. Also, I found that the templates for trucks are pretty conservative. Just a quick story, I was with my wife, taking my son to soccer. A huge likely WB sixty seven truck was at a stoplight making a right turn by us. Didn't even cross the stop bar. My wife said, wow, I can't believe, you know, that truck could make that movement. And I said, I don't want to bore you to death with stimulating traffic engineering conversation, but yes, you'd be surprised at how sharp. The drivers could make those turning movements. So I'm pretty confident that even if Mike shows. That the sixty seven can navigate the site, it's going to do even better than that. So I don't necessarily disagree with limiting it to the WB fifty five, but I don't really foresee any kind of catastrophic. Issue if a WB sixty seven were to arrive at the site because it will be able to navigate it. And like I said, the frequency is so low that there'll be very little conflict.
Is the difference the trailer length or the cab?
Is the difference the trailer length or the cab? Like, what is, I'm such a layman on what?
WB is wheelbase. So it's the distance between the wheels is sixty-seven feet. So when you have a wheelbase of fifty-five, you're shorting that wheelbase, which makes for the turns to be sharper.
So regardless of the cab or the length of the tractor-trailer they're pulling?
Could also be impacted, but when they, when you define, when it's referenced as a WB sixty-seven, it's based on the wheelbase. Obviously, if your wheelbases are certain lengths, you could probably sustain larger cabs or larger trailers.
Nothing further, Mr. Plinian.
Check away. Since, you know, we didn't have the opportunity to get reply to your letter there, I just figured I'd just go out of my eye. And thank you, Doug. I think you, your letter answered most of the questions, but I'll just for go over these to show that everything's been answered. Item sixty-two about the movements out of the site, your answer is fine. I, you know, it just was some.
Some same clarification.
Yeah, yeah, need to be clarified whether it was a left-only, right-only, and it's clarified now that it's left or right. I did notice on the site plan that it's showing like out arrows. So I guess that means it could be a left or right. If I would say probably if it were painted on the pavement, it probably should be a left arrow and a right arrow coming out, not just a straight arrow, because you can't go straight anyhow. But of course, any of the signage that I, questions that had come up, get this, disregard those because now they can make a left or a right either way. Okay. Item sixty-three, yeah, you did the counts, updated counts. That was much appreciated. You know, we have something a little bit more current that way. Item sixty-four about the existing peak hours, great. I think your analysis answered the question there. Item sixty-five, no response necessary. That's correct. You know, you did take care of that. Item sixty-six, you did add the adjoining sites for the no build. I guess now the sites you mentioned, these were all based on, were these based on conversations with township officials that these were?
Yes, and based on our office' experience too with Flem One.
So these are the only other sites in the area that are expected to come in before your site is built, you know, as the no build condition then, I guess.
That's what I was aware of, yes.
Okay, okay, good. Let me just go up. So that's sixty-six, sixty-one. Bear with me, sixty-seven. Okay, you mentioned in there about, under item sixty-seven in your response letter, December fourth, you did mention about the level of service effort at the left turn lane out of River Road.
Yes.
Now, I understand you, did you have a submission to the count? That's a county road, River Road, right?
That is correct, yeah, five twenty-three. And I may have been remiss to mention that we do have a conditional approval from the county.
Okay, good. And as I, I think I heard from the early testimony, they actually in their reply mistakenly said that there wasn't, didn't recognize that there was already a separate left-only lane coming out of the site. I guess from their reply, they're not asking for any kind of, I mean, you're taking a level of service effort and making it, I know it's, it's not much, but you're making it slightly worse by the book. They're not asking for any kind of prorata or anything for any signalization or anything there or?
No, they did not.
So I mean, if they're not asking for it, I don't think we have the power to impose something on you. I just, you know, if they, I guess if they were looking at a signal, I guess they could impose a prorata, which would be not that much, but.
Correct.
You know, okay. Sixty-seven, sixty-eight.
If I can add, when Flemington One was built, there was a recommendation by Mr. Dean to improve the sight line coming out of the new Flemington One. And I travel that way all the time. It makes a big difference for the people coming out of Miniakoning, making that left turn, because they never would have been able to see oncoming traffic before. Today, with that improvement, because of Flemington Junction One, you do see that. And of course, none of this does anything to improve upon the maelstrom that is thirty-one South.
I hear also kind of stuff about thirty-one, believe me.
One day it'll be realized.
Item sixty-eight, I don't think there's anything discrepancy, okay? Anything there that's objectionable? I think you've addressed all the comments there. And item sixty-nine, I think you addressed everything there. So I think in totality, you know, it's amazing. You're pretty well taking care of most of the items here that, you know, that I previously brought up.
Okay, so three other board questions?
I just wanted to clarify, just item number sixty-six, how it references other developments in the area. Was there a distinct timeline and area you were wanting or?
Well, it would be, what you're looking for is any developments that are going to occur between now or when the counts were conducted, okay? And when the, and now the counts are pretty much up to date. So that's a factor too. Like, if you went back to originally, the report had counts from two thousand twenty-one. If something had come in between two thousand twenty-one and now, that would have had to been added to the no build condition. But now that you have counts that are pretty recent, I think the one was done a year ago, and I don't know if anything's come in in the last year in this area. And then, and then the other counts at River Road were just done, so nothing's been built since then. What we're looking to get is anything that's going to happen between those counts and when the site is built. So the site opening date is key. So it's anything between now, basically, and when site opening occurs, any other sites that are approved and would be anticipated to be in place, that would become part of the no build condition for whatever the the site opening year is. And then they would add on top of that, the build condition would be their site traffic added on top of that. So. You know, it sounds like.
There's Apex on Miniakoning. It was a, the building is already there, but it's a, it's a new use. So I don't know if that was.
I don't know. I just, I just made a general question.
I did contact the township to determine if any other developments. I haven't had a conversation.
So I just wanted to. To answer, you know.
Well, he's saying there's another one that.
Yeah, there's, there's actually another development on Miniakoning as well within the last, within the last year. So.
Oh, but it's up and operating in the last, within the last year?
It's, it's in the process of receiving, it's in the final stages of certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
I mean, it depends how far, I mean, if there's nothing in there right now and between now and when this, this site is open for business, yeah, I guess that would become part of your no build condition. But I mean, if it's partially, is it partially?
No, it's, it's empty.
It's empty.
Empty right now.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I think, you know, we also apply that one percent growth factor, which takes into account, you know, just general background growth. So, you know, one percent at this intersection is similar to the traffic that we'd be generating. So if that development was similar to this, you know, it's kind of taken into account that background.
And it really would be adding, that would be adding to the no build condition. So all would take, you know, just to, from their point of view, it would just make the no build condition worse, upon which their build condition only adds nominally. I think that would be. Right, right. Doesn't make them look better, but it doesn't proportionally, it really, you know, it doesn't, you know, if, if, if that site had a huge impact, wouldn't matter because their site has a very small impact. So it probably doesn't matter in the grand scheme of things.
No, I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, that, yeah, yeah, I, you know, don't want to, we can go back and forth on this a million times. I, I think he's looked at it, you know, if this site had large traffic impacts, I'd be concerned about that because it could take, like, if the existing intersection were level of service D and this other site came in and took it to an E and then, you know, almost an F and then his site, like, if his site took it from a D or an E to an F, then I'd be saying, go back and redo the analysis. His, his, his site generally traffics very small here. So I don't think that's a big deal.
Okay. I'm assuming there's no questions from public. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing further, Mr. Plinian. Our final witness is our planner, John Leo Cavalo.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, Ron.
So why don't we give it, it's twenty after nine. Give it five minutes, nine twenty-five.
What would you say?
Ready. Good to go.
For the record, committee person.
Committee.
Excuse from the rest of the meeting.
Yes, she has left.
For.
Nine twenty-four.
Personal health issue.
There was nothing you said, Ron.
He's a going guy. Yeah, with the four. Our, our final witness is Mr. Leon Cavalo. He's been previously sworn. John, if you could just give the, then your qualifications to the board as a planner.
Certainly. Yes, I've been a professional planner in state of New Jersey for approximately forty years, little over forty years. I've testified before multiple times between different municipalities, over three hundred municipalities, testified in Superior Court as a consultant land use planner.
All right, thank you. You're acceptable for the board.
Thank you very much.
I discern three variances. I think two are called out in Mr. Vacarella's letter of December twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, as his items one and two. And then there is this added variance in the event where saving the tree and installing the retaining wall. They all, to me, seem similar. They're encroachments into preservation areas, but they are variances and we need to present planning testimony. So if you will.
I will go through that quickly, right? She's gone. Did she give you? Okay, I'll just go through these quickly to give you a sense.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Yeah, this is a.
They're stapled, so.
Yep, three-page set. And this would be A five. And John, if you could tell us what these three photos are.
Okay, these were taken with a drone and the first one shows on the lower left-hand side the Tida King Road. And that's the building that's in, on the corner. Left-hand side is the, under construction now, the fifty thousand square foot building. In the middle, where there's four buildings, that's Flemington Junction number, number one. This is number two, and then the present application is number three. And the, this is looking out towards the north at the horizon, towards the top of the page. The next one shows the opposite, top of the page is south. And then north is the, two of the four buildings that was part of Flemington Junction number one. And it shows the features, detention features in the lot and the forest of the area in between the number two and the existing property that we're talking about tonight. And then number three, page three shows at the top, looking east and what, and the opposite page at the, at the bottom of the situation here on this page is west. So you can see the full length and breadth of the property in question. Okay, zoning considerations here are, we're looking at an I-two major industrial district. Multiple principal uses will be proposed in accordance with the new ordinance. That was, I believe, about eighteen, twenty months ago, that was accepted based on the applications before with this applicant. There is no use variance or use relief that is required from this application. The zoning conformance, the use is permitted in the zone and the project substantially complies with all bulk controls, the lot dimensions, building height, coverage, floor areas setback on all sides, park and parking all comply with the your zoning ordinances and regulations. The relief again is the head wall structure is within the hundred-foot buffer. This would be a hardship in any case with anything built here because it's just unavoidable based on the use of this site. The second one would be the structure for stormwater within the seventy-five-foot preservation area. And the last one has been nullified, slope differential or slope disturbance. And I would defer to the testimony of Michael Ford, who discussed that with the, with the professionals on, on the board. The legal basis for the relief is it's sea variance under the flexible sea balancing test. And the benefits of the application as a whole substantially outweigh any detriment as per the New Jersey case law. Now, the benefit, project benefits here, in my estimation, of the project delivers a permitted use that is substantially conforming with the zoning code. The use provides flexibility for tradesmen, contractors, and small logistic and industrial uses. The project has a positive aesthetic. That is, there are contemporary buildings that are very compatible with buildings in the area and in the industrial park. The project promotes sufficient use by permitting utilization land to, for productive reuse or new use. Project promotes a variety of land uses in appropriate locations that are all compatible with the area. And the project also promotes the uses of the New Jersey municipal land use law, including AG, INN, which deal with a number of uses to encourage municipal action, to guide the appropriate development of all lands in the state to promote public health, safety, and general welfare, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of industrial uses and to promote a desirable visual environment. The potential impacts here are very few and will not cause a substantial adverse nature to this application. The head wall is a hardship for any use that is on the site. Only the encroachments for the tree or the buffer area are infrastructure-related. And the site, if there is any stabilization needed, will be mitigated to do away with slope disturbance impacts. In conclusion, my opinion is that the requirement here is minimal and the statutory criteria for grant of such relief is met. And the professional land use planning standpoint is that the approval is respectfully warranted for the, by this board from this applicant. If you have any questions, be glad to try to answer them for you.
Any board questions?
I do not. It was very thorough.
Thank you.
We have nothing further, Mr. Leon Cavalo, and we have no further witnesses.
Okay.
So summarize what it is that you're looking for the board to approve? Yes, sir. We're seeking from the board preliminary and final site plan approval for approximately seventy thousand square foot flex space use in two buildings. You heard testimony that the proposed use is permitted use in the zone. There is some specific relief. We're looking to consolidate the two lots into one. I believe there are three variances. All basically encroachments into the buffer preservation area, one for the head wall drainage structure, one, I believe, for grading disturbance, and the last one for the retaining wall if the tree is preserved. And there were, I think, three design waivers that are called out in the ERI letter. And I believe.
There's, there's, there's actually five.
Five, excuse me.
So you've got, you've got two variants of relief, which is one and two on page two of the board's planners report. The waivers that our applicant is seeking is item eleven and twelve of the board planner report dated twelve, twelve, twenty-four. Items two, three, and four of the board engineer report with the same date. Also, a waiver of the parking lot landscaping, which is bound on page three of the board architect report dated twelve, sixteen, twenty-four.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we would respectfully request the board grant the application. With that, can I have a motion to approve Flemington Junction Associates Three LLC, the preliminary and final site plan with the. the preliminary and final site plan with the...
Can I add conditions?
Sure.
With the following conditions of approval. Items eight, 21, 24, 26, 28, 30, 31, 32, and 33. Item 33 specifically is to agree with the fire marshal's report dated 9... The conditions in the fire marshal's report dated September 24, 2024. All of those conditions are found in the board's planner report dated December 12, 2024. Also, conditions of approval of the engineer report of the same date. Items 19, 26A, 26C, 28, 44, 52, 56, 57, 67, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, and 83. I'm so sorry. You are a rock star. I forgot that you were in the room. I'm so sorry.
Ron, this is why I reported.
I will slow down. And conditions of approval of the board landscape report dated December 16, 2024, specifically condition of a modification of tree preservation area to include large critical roots in the zone area as well as condition of restorative tree planting detail and reforestation planting specification should be provided consistent with the Rowland Township standards. And more than 50% of the reforestation trees proposed are understory trees. A maximum 25% understory trees would be desirable in this situation. And that is all of the conditions.
Joe, just since we're being very thorough and specific, did I hear you say two variances called out? Because I think there's three.
I referenced variance one and two of the planner report, but you're right, there is the third one, which is the wall, right?
The wall if needed.
If needed, thank you, thank you, Ron. Correct. That should be everything, hopefully.
Very good. Thank you for being so thorough. That's, that's great. Thank you. You're a better note taker than I am. So again, can I have a motion to approve?
Second. Chairman, Mr. Edward Giddings?
Yes.
Vice Chairman, Mr. Donna Drews?
Yes.
Mr. Scott McDade?
Yes.
Mr. Dennis McCannan? Ms. Michelle Cavacchieri?
Yes.
Mr. James Miller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming back with a pretty darn clean application.
Silver lining to your garden.
Okay. With that, we're adjourned.
Okay.
Good work. That's it.